Biloxi City Council meeting, Biloxi City Council meeting for Tuesday, September the 12th. I need a motion to amend.
So move second.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item four E, Exhibit A only for resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2324 municipal budget.
Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor? Six to zero.
No, as amended, as amended.
I need a motion as amended.
So move second.
First by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor? Six to zero. We'll now move to our presentation agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate everybody being here today. And I guess first up is our last, our insurance team, Frank and Ronnie, to come up, to give us a little information about our insurance. It's on. Was on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
I've provided everybody just a booklet and went through with the insurance committee. This is the first draft. We still have several carriers that we're waiting on to see how they come back and respond. Right now, we're in much better shape than what we anticipated. If you look at page 11, we just go through kind of the broad numbers. None of our self-insured retentions went up on any line of coverage, including law enforcement, or our workers' comp, which we anticipated both to go up, as well as premium. We had a 4% increase in premium. Some of that is driven by exposure. Most of it is just driven by market, which is much better than what we anticipated. We also went through our claims, and your claims information isn't in here. Typically, we go through it with the insurance committee and the administration. Our claims are tracking very well and continue to track very well. We've seen a decrease in claims over the past six, seven years. As that decreases, the amount of money that we anticipate having to put into our tort claims fund and our work comp account should continue to decrease as well. And so, your fixed cost at 647-806 is much less than, the 4% increase is much less than what we should be able to decrease those two accounts for. This is, the only property that's included in this is your whole policy, which had a slight increase. That's for your marine whole coverage. And so, all this is your all lines aggregate, your liabilities and your workers' comp. We will have other options, and we'll see what those other options come out to be. But as of right now, this is your incumbent carrier, and this is all good news so far. And so, I'll be before y'all next meeting to provide further details.
Thank you, Mr. Bordeaux. Does anyone have any questions?
So Frank, bottom.
I did want to thank Mr. Bordeaux for meeting with the insurance committee today and spending some time with us. And like you said, it's still a work in progress, but you're still working on the cost.
I anticipate probably meeting with the insurance committee prior to next meeting with the final options. I do know Safety National is interested in City Biloxi's account. They haven't been very competitive from a self-insured retention standpoint. And as we increase that self-insured retention, that would be more money that we'd have to set aside in our tort account. Obviously, we want to avoid that if all possible, but we are awaiting that quote to see what it will look like.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And just my one question. I think instead of a 100% increase, we're somewhat less than that, about?
4%.
4%, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
We're going to do a report. Are you asking, Fofo?
Yeah, this is about the insurance.
Okay, we're going to do our reports, just asking. We'll start with you. Yeah.
On the insurance, they've done quite a good job with the working comp. That has worked well. And I noticed on the thing, we went to 17 million. Are they counting everything we do with insurance that we self-insure, is how they get to the 17 million?
I think there are, but Diane, we've got an insurance question, the budget, as far as what we're including with the 17 million of premiums?
I mean, it's all the property insurance, that's the health insurance.
The 17 million includes our health insurance, our property insurance, workers' comp, dental, med analysis, life, vision, no, no, it's dental. Vision's 100% employee, and life insurance that we pay, and AD&amp;D.
That's how we reach the 17 million. Well, we have that line item in the budget, and I think the property insurance, all it should be listed under the self-insured, whether it's the health, anything we put in. Those are, that should be in there, not in the mayor's office. I think all the property insurance should be listed, and that way, everybody can see that, all at one time, how we got to the 17 million. So I just think that should be changed and put in there like that. Last thing I'm going to ask, have we looked at an increase for the employees? I know we've looked at, normally after the budget, you've shown some numbers, to see if we can have maybe a 3% increase coming in for the first three years, because I think everybody'd like to do that, what's going on with the police department, the fire department, everybody working for the city. So I was just wondering, that's something we all need to get together, make sure.
We definitely need to get together on that. So we're looking at every way to make it as attractive as possible for our 600-plus employees, as far as, you're talking about salaries and wages?
Right.
And there's some things cooking, but we're not talking about it right now.
Yeah, I was just wondering, that's something that we need to bring it up after all the budgets in place, and then we can start looking at some numbers.
The last time, last two years, we did that around January. And, you know, it gives us a footing on actually what realizes, you know, I think we finished our last hit as far as the big players in revenue. So I would defer to the January timeframe to say anything definite.
And I was just wondering, I know we've put a lot of money into the libraries, and we just wanted to have, we, City Biloxi funds, the taxpayers, the City Biloxi funds the libraries. All right, that's what we have, four. Do we have an audit on the city itself or Biloxi to tell the taxpayers where that money's going in the library system?
That's part of our audit.
There's a part in there that says that.
I'd like to request that.
Diana said that there's a part in there that addresses that, that part of the deal, in the audit.
Because we deal with the taxpayers' money, you know, they don't like so many displays that was out there, but it's their money. And we held responsible up here as a council to make sure all that money is being spent in the City of Biloxi. This is taxpayers' money come to all this we're doing, costs a little 2.4 a year for the libraries, you know, probably 8 million in the last three years. But I like to know what's going on with the money, to make sure it's accountable, that the City of Biloxi taxpayers are getting all they can for that dollar. I said we did property insurance, that was the main thing I wanted to do, let's see. I want to go back to this again, Fofo, and everybody's looking at this, you're trying to pick up maybe 15, 20 people, put them on to take care of the city, keep the city clean, all the streets, Highway 90, Division Street, Howard Avenue, Irish Hill. I mean, we need to have a group of people working for the city, where you can put them out working, keeping the city clean every day. And I just think that's something you could do. I know it's tough, but I mean, we could.
As I said, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I needed to cut you off.
It's hard to do, me and you. That's two good ones.
But, yeah, we actually put more services, more contractual services for that reason. And it's easier to get people eight months out of the year, then to hire them and keep them busy and keep them, you know, bang for the buck. But that's our plan, is to get more people, put the resources when needed and the amount we need. So we work with Public Works and Parks and Recreation in order to do just that.
I know you put a lot of money in that 67 million, but when you get 15, 20 people...
Well, all these, all these grounds care people, you know, have the same problems we do. I mean, every business that has significant landscaping and that sort of thing that we're, you had mentioned as far as keeping it, keeping it up to snuff, they have the same thing. So we're working through, and again, we've got the budget in order to get crews when we need it, and you'll see some action really quickly, like we did a few years ago on Highway 90, you know, in the next three weeks with regard to crews and what people will see when they drive down the main roads. But no, it's big, it's big on our list, it's top priority.
Well, I understand, but I mean, to me, it'd be, I'd rather have 20 people working for you every day, where you could tell them to do something today, they have to put out for bid, not have to do anything.
I understand, but it's not, that's eight, eight months out of the year that you can keep 20 people busy. So the economics is what we're trying to work out. I'm with you, but if we got something lined up and been able to, you know, keep everybody in line and, you know, on target, that's a challenge, and we're going to try and do that.
All right, now, one other last question on the budget. Why do we have 3.8 million left in economic development? I thought that's supposed to hang around 2 million, but I noticed it was 3.8 million.
Well, some of it's been paid back. 2.2, and we paid 2.7 in cash, the fund balance is 3.8, yeah, yeah.
And I guess the last thing, I think y'all discussing this with AMR, a lot of places I've learned that the fire department in those cities run their own ambulance service out of their rescue trucks. And they bill everybody with the insurance, the Medicaid, they get the subsidy from the county. The city would be making that money, and we had more and more EMTs in the fire department, and a lot of people do that. The city itself runs their own ambulance service, like. So I think that's something we need to probably look at.
Well, we're looking at every angle, and at our chief, and we're actually in the middle of an RFP, and to understand our specific needs. You know, Biloxi is, you know, 49,872 people as far as the last census, but any weekend, that's doubled. You know, we've got 7,000 or so hotel rooms, and we're more of a population than you first look. And I'll tell you, every time someone thinks they have a medical problem, our fire trucks are the first ones that are there, every time.
Every time.
But it's not, you know, as simple as it feels. You can, we got some folks from AMR here today. Collecting is a lot different than providing the services. So it's more to it than first meets, than meets the eye, but we're looking at every angle, chief of my line, that's, I think that's what we're doing.
Yeah, but I wanted to just, what you said is true, fire truck's the first person there.
Every time.
Me personally, myself, with my wife, and they were there and put them in three minutes. And they had everything done by time the ambulance showed up, so I'm just saying. It's something you need to look at.
When our legal department and our fire department and police department, you know, we can't fall down on what services are needed. So that's a whole intent to do, the people who visit and our citizens, you know, have the very finest response to medical or whatever situation pops up.
Anyway, I just, you know, I think that's something that we need to just really pursue.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guns?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I called Krista earlier, she's supposed to give me an update on the Main Street crossing. I know that that's coming pretty soon.
I think we striped, is that right, Robert? We, striping is finished at this point? They finally touch it up, well, hopefully, you know, by the end of the week, we may have that, is that fair? End of the week.
Oh, so we thinking Friday?
Well, that's Saturday, Friday.
You know I'm getting excited now. Okay, and the other thing I got, last but not least, I want to close the meeting in honor of Diane Horenski, one of our former two-time council members, passed away Sunday, I believe it was Sunday, at 12 noon. And she was instrumental in my 10 years of having someone to talk to about the different decisions. So I just want to make sure that everyone know about Diane Horenski, who just passed away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guns. Mr. Demme?
Just a couple of things. Robert, I know you're here in lieu of Ms. Labata. Can you come take the podium? Now, in all fairness, she did tell us to get you up here so you can work on your public presentations, but I'm actually doing this for substantive purposes. Grants Ferry, we have an easement on Grants Ferry behind the old Winn-Dixie building. Can you give me an update on that? I know we've been working on trying to get that cleared. Is there, is there an engineering issue to that, or is this just a Public Works thing?
I think it's just Public Works, but we're trying to work with Billy Ray to get it cleaned up. If not, we'll get Bottom to Top, our contractor, we have on retainer to do it.
Okay. I know some of the residents, especially one of them's been giving us a really hard time about that, and it's warranted, it's passed too. I asked Ms. Labata, and she may not have given you the information, but she was going to look into some resolutions for Pops Ferry Road regarding the manhole covers that are not the same level as the pavement. It makes for a very poor trip up and down that road, and it's one of our thoroughfares that's, you know, almost imperative to have in normal commerce.
Yeah, we have, we have a pavement contract that's actually on the council agenda today. We're going to try to add it to that, either that, or we'll just purchase them ourselves and get them on there if they're not willing to do that, but it's definitely on our radar.
Okay, thank you. Last, I don't know if you, we got an update, and I didn't get a chance to read the entire thing about the SAV, the sub aquatic vegetation. Do you, are you familiar with any of that, with the new core engineer's position?
Yeah, Mark Seymour and Seymour Engineering actually met with the DMR, it was last week, and we're working through that process. They're involving a bunch of federal agencies, because in our opinion, it seems like they haven't done this before. It's kind of out of the ordinary. In the past, they've just avoided it. They haven't had any city really push to go in and try to dredge where SAV is, but we really have no option because it's right in the center of the channel. So we're trying to substitute mitigating marsh grass instead of mitigating that, since they don't really have a process. They gave us a real positive feeling about allowing that. We just have to get the information together to submit to them how we're actually going to feasibly plant marsh grass in lieu of that SAV. And we're looking at the Causeway as the site where we would mitigate by planting marsh grass to get credits to dredge where that SAV is.
Okay. Thank you for the update. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, just a reminder to everybody, I have a ward meeting tomorrow night at the Donald Snyder Center, that's at 6 o'clock. The public's invited, as always. Mayor, are we working on a plan to deal with the challenges that the homeless population presents?
We're working on it constantly. I think the other day, we received a check for $5,000 from the Golden Nugget, and, you know, with regard to the vouchers and some of the things that we can do. Chief Miller, chief here. But, you know, we're trying to implement some of the things that we've been successful with earlier, about actually some mobile facilities that people can, you know, voluntarily go to. I mean, it's ongoing, every day there's a challenge, but we're working on it.
It's, okay, I don't know if that's enough. We should consider more than that. I just want to mention it and bring it up every once in a while, because we continue to have, I continue to have constituents, particularly out there by the mall, at the gas station, close by there, that people approach them, they don't know, asking for things, folks pandering at the corners, shopping carts. I'm working on a world-class production of the shopping cart issue in West Biloxi for my, for our attorney friend. But again, all that's...
That's problematic, yeah.
It is, so appreciate anything you can do, and hope you can make our ward meeting tomorrow night. Okay. Paving the IP parking lot, I'd mentioned that several months ago. At one point, they were looking, I think, to pave it, and then we had to finish Quavis and Fayard Street there with Oscarinda, and then they had a, what, a mobile home conference or something there, but, go ahead.
If I may, you know, part of the manufactured homes, the Southeast Manufactured Homes Conference is big on their list to have that thing paved by the next, I guess, March, wouldn't it be back in March? But that's, you know, with the price of everything, I think that's, Board Gaming has been kind of reluctant on that, but we're going to push that issue. We want that conference back.
It's just dusting unsightly, and it's been like that for...
Forever.
15, 20 years, whatever.
Yeah.
Also, I've had three constituents contact me in the last 10 days. I know with late water bills, so they get their water bill, and the due date was today, the date I received it, or yesterday was the due date. So folks can go online and pay their water bill, but there's a, there's a charge for that. And because we have three billing cycles, I'm sure part of this issue deals, for some reason, with which particular cycle is affected, is my guess, since I got all of these queries roughly in the same week. But I know the goal was to get these notices out, to give folks at least, I think, seven to 10 days, and we backed up the date, but we're still getting some of these bills out late. I just, you'll need to check on that, somebody needs to, just check and be sure. If there's a delay, I'm sure there's a reason, but all folks know is they get a late water bill, and they're penalized for that.
Okay, yeah.
So, you're on it, right? Thank you.
On top.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question, and I don't know if this is for engineering or planning. If I, if I want to put up a retaining wall, and then subsequently want to backfill it with fill dirt, what is the process to ensure that, that I don't, I guess, make the runoff any worse than it was before I start filling in my property?
Well, in some cases, it depends. If it's near a waterway, then they would get a permit from DMR and bring that permit to us, and we would issue a permit for the retaining wall to go, and we've just dealt with one today on this, along this very lines, that is in Councilman Tisdale's ward. But normally what happens is we would give them the permit for the retaining wall based on what they got from DMR, but then as far as the fill dirt goes, if they came to our office, we would send them to engineering. Engineering would look at it to make sure that the placing of that fill would not displace any area that was designed to retain water. And once we get an email or approval from engineering, then we would issue the fill permit. We don't make that decision in our department.
So let me just take that a little further. So when engineering is contacted, can they just visually look at it and say, yeah, bring in some dirt? Or do they have to go through a process to analyze it to ensure that it's not going to create a runoff any worse than it was pre-fill versus post-fill?
Theoretically, they're supposed to go out and look at it, and they're also supposed to get the owner to provide some calculations to show that this is not going to create an, have an adverse impact on drainage or water. But we, you know, we just, we have to rely on what engineering tells us.
If that process isn't followed, does the complaining neighbor have any recourse to request that be done properly?
It would be a judgment call from engineering if they go out there and say, look, they placed this fill, they either put in more than they were supposed to, or they didn't grade it the right way for the drainages to go, then if engineering tells us that it's a problem, then we would handle it just like we would any code enforcement case.
And one other question, so then the fill is, is put down, then there's a rain event or a weather event, and it does create that flooding as a result of that fill, then what happens?
Well, typically, the owner will send us pictures showing that, you know, we didn't flood before, and look what's happening now, and we actually use those pictures in our code enforcement case.
They didn't flood before, or flood, what if they flooded before, but there's even worse flooding as a result of the fill?
Well, again, we have to rely on some engineering documentation somewhere, because it's one person's word against the other, that it's actually worse. But we usually get engineering involved in it to go take a look.
Okay, thanks, that satisfies my questions. Thank you, Director. Parks and Recreation, I still have a question, because I ride around these parks in my ward quite frequently, and the, just the adjacent wards. There appears to be, I mean, I'm talking hundreds of light bulbs that are out. I've been out there, they're trying, you know, some of the teams, Little League teams are trying to practice, the tennis court is another issue, but there appears to be hundreds, I mean, not just a few lights out, it appears to be hundreds of lights out. Can I request a report on that and letting us know exactly how many light bulbs are out? And then what is the remedy for that?
You're talking about at the complex?
I'm talking about the sports complex, the, you know, even the tennis court, even some of the surrounding area parks.
Okay.
It appears we've got an issue with lighting, I mean, no lights.
Actually, we're working on the AJ Holloway Sports Complex now, working on the numbers and what it's going to cost.
Okay. And the other, I mean, not just AJ Holloway Sports Complex, but any surrounding parks we need to look at, make sure that the, I mean, what happens, Director, when the lights go out and the light bulbs burn out? What's the maintenance or regular scheduled maintenance to ensure those lights are working?
Once, several of them go out, more than one or two, 10 or something like that, but they don't make the Matter High Lights anymore, so that's our issue.
Right.
So we're going to have to go to the LED, and we've gotten quotes before, but we, we have a plan that we're putting together, and we'll share it.
All right, but may I request you give me an analysis on how many lights are not working?
Okay.
How many light bulbs are out? I appreciate that. The other thing, and I'll reserve this later on, I noticed we got several people in the audience related to the seafood and shrimping industry. We have a resolution that's on our agenda, it's on the policy agenda 4D, and I really appreciate y'all coming today. I'll be reading a statement later on. You have the opportunity to speak under public comments later on, and then if you still want to speak further, when this resolution comes up for discussion, I would invite any interested party that has some relevant information to speak further. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Just have a couple of things. This weekend, we had two large events in City Biloxi. One of them was the Seafood Festival, and since I've been going, I don't think I've ever seen a crowd as big as we had this weekend. It was, it was really nice. And then right down the street at Margaritaville, every year, we have Tunnels to Tower, which is an amazing event, and I believe over 1,000 people registered to, to run and climb in this event this year, which was by far a record for this event here. But, and the City of Biloxi is a part of sponsoring that, but it's just a great event that gives back to our first responders, and glad to see great participation in the city. Sherry, a couple of questions. The electrical design on the Eagle Point Park, I remember somewhere seeing an email or something that we're supposed to be getting that September 13th, is that correct? Robert, do you know that?
September 13th, yeah.
Is that the right? And so, once, when we get that, how long will it take, and this may be a Peter or Fofo mayor question, how long will it take for us to get that to go out to bid, or get approval to, that'll be, that can get on the agenda pretty much immediately, right? For the lights, the electrical lights for Eagle Point Park? Okay, so it'll be lamey then, so we use them often? Okay, so we have to, we have to do an RFP on that then?
It's already done.
Oh, okay, all right.
It had to be undone.
Oh, by the 13th, okay, okay, I misunderstood. I thought that lamey was the, okay, my fault. All right, and then second, on, I talked to you about an event at Eagle Point... All right, and then second, on, I talked to you about an event at Eagle Point Park. Did we ever get anything scheduled on that, or no?
October twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
Fire done now, so I was going to send it to you to show.
Okay, okay, if you're going to be here after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you. Okay, that'll work, and that's all that I have, so that will, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Newman came in. You have a report? No report? All right, that citizen, our public council's reports are closed. We'll now go to our public agenda. Citizens' comments with a total amount and time of forty-five minutes. Each resident will have three minutes to speak. When you speak, come forward, state your name and address, and please sign in at the sheet on the table. When the bell rings, your time's up. I'll start on my left side, your right side. If anyone on my left side would like to speak, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Alan Weatherford. I am here today as a concerned citizen of Harrison County. Have thirty-nine years in law enforcement, seven of those years was chief of police in Gufford, retired in two thousand thirteen. I have been following the EMS issue for about four months, four or five months, very concerned regarding the fragmentation of our EMS system in Harrison County. I understand how we got here, but, you know, I visit this city, have family in this city, shop in this city, but I know firsthand the adequate response times our family member received advanced medical care in Harrison County. The leadership in, back in the early eighties, had the vision to create a county-wide EMS district to do what was best for the cities and the county. We must not stop short of that vision. We should revisit our county contract and ordinance. You go back to the early eighties, AMSER, Mobile Medic, I'm not here to discuss a EMS provider. I don't care who the EMS provider is for Harrison County. While EMS is under much scrutiny across this county for, in this country, for lagging response times for various reasons, we must admit that our nine-one-one system has been abused in our EMS system. You see it on every poster, call nine-one-one. You've got people who call because they can't get a family member to take them to a hospital, so that EMS provider responds, and most of the time do not transport. Manpower is an issue across this nation with most EMS providers, as is for public safety. What are the potential consequences for creating additional EMS districts in the cities? What would be the cost to the taxpayers of Harrison County and the city by creating these different EMS districts? What is the increase in subsidies for the EMS OF funds? Cost of the nine-one equipment, nine-one-one equipment for additional EMS providers? I think that's around eighty thousand dollars a year that the nine-one-one commission provides there, so you have additional potential costs. Location of our EMS dispatch center right now is in Harrison County. You go with a different EMS provider, you could potentially be out of state, or you could be out of county. I think we need to learn from the disasters that we've had, let's keep it local. The potential lag time in dispatch forwarding the EMS nine-one-one calls to the EMS provider due to the location?
Mr. Weatherford, your time is up. Thank you.
Can I speak again at the, on the-
You can talk to us individually after, but we have to keep, keep within those three minutes. All right, anyone else on my left side of the room, your right side of the room that would like to speak? My left side, your right side, yeah, come forward. Please sign in and state your name.
All right, thank you, council, for allowing me to address you guys briefly today. I just wanted to say, express our sincere appreciation. My name is Ryan Bradley, I'm a fifth-generation commercial fisherman. I'm the executive director of Mississippi Commercial Fisheries United. We represent several hundred commercial fishermen here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Shrimping is a major, major industry here on the coast, it has been for a long time. Biloxi was once the seafood capital of the world, as we all know, and there's no reason why we can't get back there. But to get back there, it takes strong leadership, and you guys and girls are doing that today, exemplifying that strong leadership and being the first coastal city to come forward with a resolution supporting the shrimp industry that is in a dire, dire situation right now. We've seen our neighboring states, Louisiana, Alabama, several counties and cities, parishes, and these states have passed similar resolutions in the last several weeks, and it's really encouraging to see the shrimp industry come together, not only in the Gulf, but across America, to support our wild domestic shrimp harvesters. And so, just really, the problem that's going on, that's been going on for decades, is the volume of imported shrimp coming into this country has crushed the marketplace for our local shrimp producers, to the point where some of our processors have even shut down, wholesalers, offloaders have quit buying the shrimp, and that has caused a ripple effect throughout the seafood economy. It's devastating to our local fishermen, and without support, they're really on the brink of not being able to continue their family businesses. And so, I just want to thank each and every one of you again for, for considering the resolution that Councilman Glavine has put forward in support of the shrimp industry. We hope you guys will support that, and we'll be standing by if you have any questions. So, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Anyone else on my left side, your right side?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kendra Arnison. I'm a licensed boat captain, and I operate and, or own and operate our vessels, and we do so in both the state and federal fisheries off the coast of Louisiana. For the last fourteen years, I've been heavily involved in fishery advocacy, and for the last five, I've represented the commercial fishermen on the Plackmans Parish Government's Coastal Zone Management Advisory Committee. Through my years of advocacy, I've learned quite a bit, and when I started this project back in May, I had done quite a bit of research to get to that start point, and here we are today, all these months later. So I'd like to thank you, each and every one of you, for your attention and time on this important matter. Looking at the World Trade Organization's rules of play, there's only a couple loopholes we can go through, this is one of them. In all of my research, this is actually the only viable, tangible option that I have been able to identify. What I'm asking the Department of Commerce, International Trade Commission, and the United States Trade Representatives to do is to implement existing emergency measures to restrict the overall influx of imported shrimp encompassing all countries of origin and all forms of shrimp. I'm asking for this specifically for a multitude of reasons. In order to know where we're going, we must know where we have been. In my research, I've seen attempt after attempt after attempt to address this issue, and all of them have either failed, fell short, or we have large organizations that have taken settlements from importers and from other countries. They say they're doing it in the name of the commercial fishermen, they go to DC, and then they turn around, they take a settlement in our name, and use our plight to pad their pockets. That is a fact. It's been multimillion-dollar settlements that has come at the expense of our fishermen. And we talk about our fishermen quite a bit, and the plight of our fishermen and coastal communities. What a lot of people don't talk about when they consider the seafood industry is, we are access to this renewable resource. That's what we represent. We are Americans' access to a viable food source. In the name of our national food sovereignty and food security, I can't stress the importance hard enough or far enough. We need this in our future. We cannot continue to depend upon aquaculture shrimp coming in from different countries full of antibiotics and bacterias, where our FDA does not have the capacity to test more than one percent of all seafood coming into our country. So, we're going to skin this cat multiple different ways at the federal level. We're looking at going at, from multiple directions at this. Health and welfare will be a big part of that moving forward in the year to come, but right now, this is the item that I am currently working on. So I hope to garner your support. So far, we've passed every single coastal parish in Louisiana, with the exception of Iberia and Jefferson. Iberia is tomorrow night, and so is Jefferson. My team will split up for the two, and there are multiple parishes today as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Arnison. All right, anyone else on my left side, and your right?
Mark Copswell, I'm a fourth-generation commercial shrimper, and I was actually the ninetieth shrimp king for Biloxi. And I am actively in the shrimp industry, my income is one hundred percent shrimp. Although I grew up on Point Cadet, I do reside in Jackson County now, but all my business is done in Biloxi. And, you know, the hardware stores, the unload docks, the fuel and ice docks are all done in Biloxi. And as it is right now, because of the influx of imported shrimp into our country, I come in, two weeks ago, there's two docks in Biloxi, Biloxi Dock and Ice and Gulf Pride. I've dealt with Biloxi Dock and Ice, which was formerly St. Michael's Seafood, for probably fifteen years. They refused to buy my shrimp, because if they bought them, they couldn't sell them. I sold them to Gulf Pride, he put them on an eighteen-wheeler body, and they still sitting in an eighteen-wheeler body today, because he cannot find cold storage, because all the cold storage facilities in the country are filled with imported shrimp. So I ask council, Mr. Mayor, to do anything and everything in y'all's power to help the shrimp industry in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copswell. Anyone else on my left, your right? Anyone else on my left, your right?
Good afternoon, I'm Sarah Chrislerewski, the Harrison County Library System. I did want to respond to Mr. Lawrence's question about the audit. When we last had our hearing in August, I forwarded that to Mr. Leonard, and I remember Mr. Deming asked me about it at that hearing, so you should have a copy in your email of our audit. We are audited annually, so we're happy to provide that to you, and it does detail the amounts of funds that we get from each of our funders, so just wanted to address that. So I would like, again, to take a moment to ask you all to reconsider your allocation for the Biloxi libraries. As I reiterated at your last hearing, we're below the level that we would be able to take a significant step in bringing our staff wages closer to parity with that of city workers. I'd like to underline that even if we achieve the goal, that goal, the majority of our staff will remain below the starting salary of your lowest-paid workers. I understand that this year's ask is a large one. However, it is necessary to attempt to be fair to our staff and to keep up with expenses. It is also currently still below our two thousand and five budget. I don't think that it's unreasonable to expect our two thousand and twenty-three funding to surpass our funding of eighteen years ago. We are asking all of our funders for increases, it is not just a request for making of Biloxi. As I have stated previously, I feel that allocating millage for the library would provide a simple means to ensure that our funding grows in a reasonable manner, so that we don't stagnate for a decade and then attempt to catch up in a cumbersome quantity as we are now. Another point I'd like to address is the impression I have from comments at previous hearings that the council feels it's unreasonable for the buildings to take up resources. Again, the current issues at West Biloxi are urgent now, because they have been deferred, just like the funding for services. By way of comparison, you may have noticed in the news recently that our neighbors in Ocean Springs have had a grand opening for that library after a one-point-three-million-dollar renovation. The Jackson George Library System is currently in the midst of a series of renovations that each are similarly extensive. Maintaining facilities is a normal cost of doing business. A final thought, libraries and museums constitute the largest part of your non-departmental expenses. We are not identical, but we have many similarities in our roles and the benefits we provide in the community. The council seems to find museum expenses reasonable and not to have issue with the funding level for these important institutions. I would argue that our request is on a comparable level in proportion to our work, size, and usage. Again, I feel that because of the size of the library support needed, it would be beneficial to us and to the city to move the libraries to a millage-based model and away from the non-departmental designation. Regardless of whether you decide to allocate millage, I hope you allow us to continue, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left, your right? All right, we'll move to my right, your left. Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to speak? All right, come forward, sign in, state your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Simons. I'm here for a code violation on one-four-one Travie. Technically, my place, my lawn, you could say, is not compliant. However, it is greener than my neighbors', and the grass is bushier. And this flower makes it not compliant, because it's considered a weed. Bees like the flowers in my lawn, by the way. I was able to remember the date of the hearing despite the fact that my neighbors tore up the sign of the code violation, but of course, my neighbors are Masons and will never face prosecution, because Masons are allowed to commit crimes against me. They are allowed to selectively enforce laws, falsely accuse me, and attack me, rob me, and maim me with their badges on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? All right, there's no one else? That end of public comments will now move to the policy agenda, item A.
Orders to amend Chapter Twelve Licenses and Business Regulations to add Article Thirteen Ambulance Services.
All right, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for discussion purposes, although this is just a first reading.
The first reading.
So procedurally.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Tisdale, a second by Mr. Gines. Today's a first reading only, so we'll now move to item B.
Orders to amend Chapter Twelve Licenses and Businesses Regulations to add Article Fourteen Alcohol It Beverages Consumption and Storage on Unlicensed Premises.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second. That's also a first reading. We'll move to item C.
Orders to grant a zoning map amendment for the establishment of a PDC planned development commercial master plan for residential development for two thousand and sixty-eight Beach Boulevard.
All right, this was moved by Ms. Newman and seconded by Mr. Glavine.
This is an apartment complex being proposed. It'll be on the west side of the Ocean Club condominiums, between there and the cemetery. It's going through DRC, it's a very well-designed project. They do meet their parking requirements. It'll have a hundred and forty-four units in it, all of them will be three stories, but they are not asking for short-term rental, this will be long-term rental, market-rate apartments. I'm sorry?
And nobody's against it.
Well, I'm not going to- Well, I'm not going to say that. We didn't have any opposition at the planning commission, but, I mean, this property is perfectly suitable for what they're asking for, so.
Thank you.
I have a question, Jerry.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Glavin, you have anything?
I have nothing. Go ahead, George.
All right.
You have right here is you have a planned development, commercial master plan, extended authorization for residential development. It's supposed to be residential 144 units. What does all this commercial master plan, what does that have to do with any of this?
Well, the PDC, the PDC allows him to do the apartments. It's what the zone, the property is already zoned is commercial. But this particular developer does residential apartments. That's what he's done. I've known him for a long time, and that's all I've ever known him to be in. So, you know, if you're concerned about short-term rental, if these are going to be short-term rental, they would be, have to be built as short-term rental. They're going to build them as regular apartments. They won't meet any of the hotel standards. So, if at some point somebody decides to convert them, they would have to go in and gut those.
They'd have to go do what if they want to turn them to short-term rental?
They'd have to gut the apartments and go back in and put MC cable or rigid conduit inside.
So, why wouldn't they just move to residential neighborhood instead of going through a commercial master plan extension?
They're doing the, they're doing the.
It's like we did a lot of stuff for nothing.
Yeah, well, they're doing the PDC, again, because the property is already zoned commercial and because they needed some flexibility on the setbacks on the east side because a couple of the buildings are very close to the property line. Aside from that, they're not asking for any variances or anything, so it just, it made sense to do it as a PDC.
And that, while they did the 29,000 square feet in the front, they had to move that back. There's supposed to be nothing on the 29,000, the first 29,000.
Yeah, the reason, the reason they subdivided that lot off separately is because either their insurance company or their finance company did not want that property that is in the velocity zone included in with the lot where the apartments are going to be developed. So, that was something that they did just to accommodate their financing and insurance.
I know we had trouble before with the water and sewer and Ocean Club. Now you had 144 units. What you did to address that?
Well, I mean, I believe this is one of the areas where the new water lines and sewer lines went in, so.
Well, we hoped it does. I mean, that's 144, that's a lot.
Well, it went through, it went through DRC, and engineering didn't have any objection to it, and that's one of the reasons that we depend on engineering to be on DRC, so.
Yeah, that's all good, but I mean, I could tell you before, half these things, two years down the road, that's where the problem comes up. And it's already done, and we already got the site plan. I mean, it's not you, it just happens.
Yeah.
When you had that many units there, that's a lot. And you, as you said, there's going to be no problem with the traffic. You're talking about two cars, that 288 cars coming out of those trip.
It's permanent housing and long-term housing, and we need long-term housing in Biloxi, so.
Do what?
It's long-term housing. We need long-term rental housing.
It's the traffic. I'm saying about long-term housing. So, you got 288 cars coming out of one driveway. That's what I was asking.
No, there's two, two ways in and out. They have an easement agreement with the adjacent property so that they can go in and out on that side, too.
Two lanes off Highway 90?
They got two ways off of Highway 90, and then they've got a cross-access agreement with the property to the east.
And they have enough room for emergency vehicles to get in there?
Yes, sir.
No problem at all?
Fire department sits in on DRC, too, when these projects come in, Mr. Lawrence, and that was where there'd be objections if there were any. So, if this is approved today, then the DRC would sign off on the site plan, and then they can submit their building plans for construction. We'd go from there.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Creel. This is long-term rental properties.
Yes, sir.
And to the west, I mean, sitting in front of it will be the Beach Club condominiums.
Ocean Club, yes.
Ocean Club, I'm sorry. Ocean Club. And to the west is Southern Memorial Cemetery.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And I heard you say this previously, I think I asked you to repeat it several weeks ago. We are in need of long-term rental properties.
We are, yes, sir.
And I'll just bring up short-term rental, just because, just for a moment. So, not all of the 425 currently permitted were long-term rentals, but I suspect many or most of them were. So, that, that house, that housing segment of the market is disappearing when we create more short-term rentals, in my opinion. Not exclusively, but that, I think that's a big factor. So, so it'll be interesting to see that area develop, so I favor this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, a call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. Now move to item D.
Resolution affixing the tax levy for the calendar year, tax year 2023.
I have a first by Mr. Lawrence. I'll second it. Mr. Lawrence, any discussion?
I looked over there, don't look there. I don't find any changes, and I wonder if it was really minute.
Yeah, I think exactly. Diane is still here, not in.
I have no idea.
Any other discussion?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments to make. I won't be voting for this resolution for the following reasons. As I'd mentioned at a workshop previously and in past years, I think we should have increased the millage this year for several reasons. One, to increase the pay in order to attract applicants to fill the positions that are now empty, particularly in law enforcement. I think we need to adequately, equitably compensate current employees, and over the years, the pay raises they've received have been sporadic. I would rather see something more systemic in that regard. I think we need to prepare for the increase in contributions by employers to the public employees' retirement system. It's, it's coming. I don't know how it will be phased in, and the mayor and I don't see eye to eye on this. But we disagree on that, but it's coming, and it's going to be significant, and I suspect we'll see percentage increases for several years concurrently. Also, I'm concerned about the infrastructure in West Biloxi. We received the West Biloxi Master Plan almost two years ago. We are doing some work in Tanglewood, and it's long overdue. We're replacing water lines there, but we also have about a quarter of a billion with a B, a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of work in drainage and sewage and water lines in West Biloxi that's south of the bay from White Avenue to De Bees. And I'm sure there are infrastructure issues in some parts of Ward Four, which has older neighborhoods, and some parts of Ward Six. We've done quite a bit of work in Ward Seven, the city has in the past few years, and deservedly so. I don't begrudge those dollars at all. They need those utilities as well. That being said, particularly in some neighborhoods in my ward, we have residents who are tired of boil-water notices, and that's because of the water lines. In some cases, that technology's so old, those lines are very fragile. And any movement, sometimes a fire truck going by or a garbage truck ruptures those lines. So, for those reasons, I won't be voting for this tax levy. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I have a six-one vote. Mr. Tisdale in opposition. Now move to item E.
Resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2324 municipal budget.
I'll make a motion to, to approve it.
Have a second? Have a second? Anyone? I'll second it. All right, discussion?
You know, I believe we did quite a bit of work on this budget. It's not a perfect, perfect budget. I don't think everyone got exactly what we would like to see it look like in the end, but I think there were significant concessions made. We debated the revenue streams. We debated the one-time expenses that have affected the general fund. But in the end, we do have a means to pass this budget and look to the future for additional revenue streams and growth to be able to ensure that future budgets can be enacted fairly and equitably in the best interest of our citizens. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Lawrence, you have anything?
Yes, I do. I'm going to vote for this on the reservation that I reserve the rights. There's several things in here to me. Yeah, it was a lot of work, and some of it has money in this budget to give raises. Money in there to do a lot of things. We move money around. Whatever you want to do with it, that's fine. If you don't spend it, that's money sitting in the bank. And I think there's a lot of money, just like the 27,000, that thing for the Jerry Creel head and everybody, that's just throwing 27,000 in trash can. It's no good for nothing. That's a bad thing. And a lot of stuff was brought up at meeting, but we never got rid of them. Put them back into the budget. So, these are things. Like I said, the library, I need an order from the city of Biloxi where the taxpayers' money of the city of Biloxi went in the library system. That's what I'm looking for. Rest of the county, that's their problem. I need a city of Biloxi's audit on the library. That's 780,000 plus the bills on itself. That one bill is going to cost probably 250 to fix it up. And that's what they want to do, keep the libraries open. Well, they better report back to us where that money is being spent. I don't know what they do with it. They say they keep paying it, pay it $10 an hour. Well, that's up to them. You know, we put up a lot of money for these libraries. The city of Biloxi, taxpayers, all of us do it. And that's why they have some problem with the displays and other things in the library. It's the people's money, and it's our job to make sure we take care of the taxpayers' money. So, for that, the reason I'm just, are there a couple of things in there? I was just going to vote for it because you have to put the budget in place. You got to pay the taxpayers, and you got to pay our bills. We don't want to do that, you know? So, I tell the things, there's a lot of things in this budget that could be worked on pretty easy, and I will push for the 3% raise. Whatever we have to do to get that for the people, then I think the employees deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gines, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. George mentioned raises. I think we need to kind of constantly look at that down the road, making sure our employees are taken care of. I noticed, talking to one of my counterparts over in Gulfport, that the paramedics over in Gulfport received a substantial raise, and I know that we could possibly lose some of our first responders who could possibly get out. So, I would like the administration to consider looking at them to make sure we are comparable to the people that are our neighboring cities, to make sure we, we at least match so we won't lose some of our valuable employees. And the other thing is, George spoke about the library, which is essential. As I said, I'm a product of public library, and I would love to see the library function and operate in our cities. And I think Dr. Tisdale, I would like him to just elaborate a little bit on what we were talking about, and I would like to make a motion on maybe increasing that library fund. Dr. Tisdale, could you elaborate on that?
We'll just, we'll come down the line, and then he can make that. All right, Ms. Newman, do you have anything?
I just want to say that I feel like we're in a huge predicament, and I think things are going to get worse. Yes, I agree with Tisdale that West Biloxi has a lot of issues that need to be addressed, but at the same time, those individuals in our ward cannot afford tax increases. I mean, I know for a fact, my insurance went 700, up $700, and it's probably going to go up even more. And then I just, I feel it in the business world as well, just in the last month. Things have plummeted. I think it's going to get worse. People cannot afford to even go out anymore. They can't afford their mortgages anymore. I think of, you know, and then, of course, we also need to raise pay as well. So, it's, it's, it's hard to establish how we're going to go about this because, yes, I mean, everyone needs to afford it. Everything's going up in prices, but then they can't afford even more things going up. So, it's like, what do you do? So, I think we're in a predicament, and we definitely need to be smart about this.
Thank you. Mr. Deming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I would make a motion, excuse me, to appropriate an additional $36,262 to the Harrison County Library Commission in addition to the increased costs that we all face, whether it's your budget at home or the budget in the city or the budget for the library, particularly insurance costs. I, I understand that the contents and the insurance for the contents for the libraries has gone up significantly this year. But having, having been said that, I've made my motion. Hopefully, there'll be a second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'm second.
All right, I'll open that up for discussion. Anyone want to discuss it? Mr. Deming?
I'd be happy to discuss that, not because I'm opposed to libraries or public use of libraries, but a couple of things. Firstly, we all do face increased costs, and whether, like Dr. Tisdale says, we face it at home in our own budgets or anywhere else, what we tend to do when we, when we face increased costs, we cut back. We don't ask for expansion, we cut back. And so, we have to do that now. I understand the function of libraries and how important they are to communities, but when we look at our system and the expenditures on our system, we look at our sister cities around us and like Green and, and that, Green County and I can't remember the other county that it's with, but that's one library. Jackson County has a limited number of libraries, one. Gulfport has two libraries. There's 70,000 people. We're 45,000 to 50,000 people, and we have four libraries. So, per capita, we're way above the amount per person when it comes to libraries. So, when you start to look back at things that are necessary and necessities, it's hard to justify adding more money to a system that we've already inflated year after year after year after year. I can't support adding more money to it. I think that they should be looking more to cutting back personnel usage and increasing wages for the remaining members of the staff if that's the way they want to go. I have nothing further.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, did you have anything?
I think you have to live within the budget you're in, unlike the rest of us.
All right, anyone else? Any other discussion? All right, if not, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? All right, pass. Okay, any other? Okay, so, Mr. Tisdale, did you have any, anything else you wanted to cover on item E beyond that?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Glavin, item E?
Nothing.
It was, it was two opposed, or four, that was.
The amendment failed.
The amendment failed. It was Mr. Tisdale motioned, second by Mr. Gines. They both voted for it. Everyone else voted against. Okay, all right. The only thing I have to say is, as, as George said, we have to put a budget forward. I believe that, that throughout the year, we can do some work and adjust some things within this budget. I don't think it's a perfect budget. I do know that we probably, since I've been in office, this is the hardest we've worked on a budget to try to, to make some movement and make it better. I don't believe that tax increase is the answer. I believe that the answer, whenever I started as a councilperson in 2017, we had an annual budget somewhere around $55 million, and here it is, 2023, we have an annual budget somewhere around $74 million. So, I don't believe that the answer is raising taxes. I believe that the answer is cutting our spending in places and looking for creative ways to cut our spending. So, I'm not in favor of that. But with that being said, it's not a perfect budget, but I will vote for it because we do have to put a budget forward to pay bills, et cetera. So, with that being said, I'll call for the question. All in favor of item E? We have five. That's Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gines, Ms. Newman, Mr. Glavin, and myself. All opposed. It's going to be Mr. Deming and Mr. Tisdale. All right, we'll now move to item F.
Resolution urging the U.S. Secretary of Commerce and the U.S. Trade Representative to implement the existing measures to limit the overall volume of imported shrimp in America.
I'd like to move that.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Glavin, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a statement I would like to read. First of all, to our local shrimpers and all the fishermen along the Gulf Coast, I stand with. with you today to emphasize the urgent need for action on a matter that directly impacts our domestic wild-caught harvesters and shrimpers. We face a critical situation that demands immediate attention as the survival of this vital industry hangs in the balance. It is imperative that we rally behind a resolution urging the U.S. Secretary of Commerce and the U.S. Trade Representative to implement existing measures to limit the overall volume of imported shrimp in America. Additionally, we must implore the commissioners of the International Trade Commission to include all forms of shrimp from all countries when considering imports. By doing so, we can safeguard the future of our wild-caught shrimp industry and promote a sustainable and thriving industry for the benefits of our economy and coastal communities. Our shrimpers face an alarming threat to their livelihoods. The influx of imported shrimp, often produced through unsustainable practices and at lower cost, have inundated the American market. The surge in imports has placed our domestic harvesters at a severe disadvantage, threatening their economic viability and survival. By implementing existing measures to limit the overall volume of imported shrimp, we can level the playing field and provide our American shrimping industry with a fair chance to compete. Beyond the economic implications, we must not overlook the environmental impact of rampant shrimp imports. Many countries employ fishing practices that are detrimental to marine ecosystems, including the destruction of vital habitats and the use of harmful chemicals. By prioritizing domestic wild-caught shrimp, which are harvested sustainably and adhere to stringent environmental regulations, we can promote responsible fishing practices and protect our fragile coastal ecosystems for future generations. The domestic wild-caught shrimp industry is a significant contributor to our nation's economy, providing employment opportunities for countless individuals in coastal communities. By curtailing the volume of imported shrimp, we can stimulate economic growth and create more jobs within our own borders. This will not only benefit the shrimp boat owners, but also support related industries such as processing, packaging, and distribution. By investing in our domestic industry, we will foster a self-reliant and resilient economy. Just bear with me a couple more paragraphs here. The health and well-being of our citizens should always remain a top priority. While imported shrimp may offer lower prices, they come with uncertainties regarding food safety and quality standards. By favoring domestic wild-caught shrimp, we adhere to rigorous regulations and are subject to stringent inspections. We can guarantee that consumers are provided with safe and high-quality seafood. This not only protects public health, but also strengthens consumer confidence in our domestic products. And in conclusion, the survival of our local shrimpers, as I mentioned earlier, hangs in the balance. Necessitating immediate action by urging U.S. Secretary of Commerce and U.S. Trade Representatives to implement measures limiting the volume of imported shrimp and calling on the commissioners of International Trade Commission to include all forms of shrimp from all countries, we can protect the interests of our domestic industry, preserve environmental sustainability, foster economic growth, and ensure food safety. Let us seize this opportunity to safeguard the future of our domestic wild-caught shrimp and secure a thriving, sustainable industry for generations to come along all of the coastal communities. And I'm talking from Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, Florida, and even in South Carolina and Georgia. This has been a very emotional, as I've delved into what is happening to our industry and our family. Grew up supporting the Kopsawa family and the Baker family, and I can go on and on to all the families and all the families in South Louisiana as well. I've spoken to some of them, and they're being hard-hit. Just a few decades ago, if you were a shrimper, and Mark can attest to this, you could get $6 plus a pound for your shrimp. And your fuel back then was a dollar or less, the diesel was a dollar or less a gallon. Today, fuel is almost $4 a gallon or more, and they're only getting about 65 cents or less a pound for their shrimp. So let that sink in for a minute. And they can't even get the people that are storing their product to store it, because it's chock-full of these imported shrimp that are just inundating our markets, and it's not fair to our American shrimpers. With that, I'll, I'll yield.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I think, yes, thank you. I think my friend in Ward Six has noted these circumstances quite clearly. I don't have anything to add to that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Lawrence?
The problem is, is the shrimp's out there. You can tell Mark, you can catch all the shrimp you want, you can't sell them. You just can't sell them. The other problem is, the stuff they shipping in here is toxic. That people are going to realize they're not eating fresh shrimp like in Biloxi. This stuff's not controlled. It's just shipped in here, and it's toxic. It's not good for you. You're creating a lot of problems in your body. The problem is, we have to convince the federal government to step up and stop the import. And take this resolution, and take this into the Mississippi, everywhere in the United States. This is a business that's dying because of the cheap bad shrimp they shipping into the United States. And those things have to be flushed out. So what's going to happen? When they flush them out, that water goes into our rivers and bays. So there's nothing good about buying bad shrimp that's toxic. So anything we can do to help them, we have to do it. My white family grew up the Kopsawas, doing shrimping. Of course, they all passed away, but now, probably good for them, you know, they don't have to put up with this. Because it's really a sin that that business, they've been beaten up that bad for no reason. Got the best seafood in Biloxi. That's why there's pretty brown water out there. Everything's so good. That makes great seafood. So definitely support it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
I do have one more comment, if you allow me. I also want just everybody to know, you know, years ago, you had over 2,000 licenses here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Today, you have, what is it, a couple hundred?
260.
How much?
250.
250, 260.
Yes, of course.
And then in Louisiana, what's, what's the numbers there a few years ago to contrast that?
A decade ago, we had a little over 10,000 licensed commercial shrimpers in the state of Louisiana. To date, we have 4,303.
Yeah.
We're less than 50% in under a decade.
And it's just a hidden thing, because we enjoy shrimp. We don't know where most of it's coming from. We don't. And we got to wake up, and we got to support them. You know, in the coming weeks, I've been looking at another resolution, but I'd like to get with the mayor on it, and perhaps passing a companion resolution that I know some of the parishes are, on maybe even a state of emergency for the Gulf.
You want me to wait till the time to talk?
No, listen, we're about to vote on this, but if...
Although, you know, with the Louisiana fishermen here...
If you can come up here.
With the support of the Louisiana fishermen, that a lot of the boats, the commercial shrimpers from Louisiana come to Mississippi and tie up in Biloxi, and they generate revenue for Biloxi. You know, when they come here, they stay in the hotels, they go out to our restaurants and eat also. So that is why we want, you know, we have Louisiana in here with us, because they do generate the revenue of Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think it's safe to say that everyone up here supports the local shrimping industry and understands the significance of it, and will do anything that we can to help, challenge all of our local municipalities and counties to join as well. And Mayor, I thought, did you want to say something? Okay. 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 All right. So I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven-zero. All right. We'll take a break between this and the consent agenda real quick.
It's a great pleasure. We have our president of the corporation, the director of the Chicago, we've got the chief of protocol, the president and the security team. So I'd like to go up and say hello to the security team, the American community, the president, the president, the president.
How are you doing?
Good to see you again.
We'll now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
I only have one thing. A lot of these are just regular contracts. And this is back on here again, Keith Hurd. I cannot support that at all. And I'm tired of X and Pope over reports or something, and we paid this man a lot of money. If he do any good, I sure have no clue. I've never seen anything yet. So anyway, can't support this at all. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Guines?
I think everything is fine. I agree with everything. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Newman?
You can.
Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
I can't support item K either. That's what Mr. Lawrence was referring to. Thank you.
Glavin?
I have no reservations.
Okay. I don't have any questions either, really. The only thing on item K, is there any way that we can get an update for Mr. Hurd on the things that he's working? And I know that during legislative, when we're not in state legislative session, he's not working up there as much, but I know he's working in DC on things. But if we can just get a report, just to...
And without a doubt, I'm, you know, I wouldn't be supporting this if we didn't get the return of what we've been, you know, in the trenches right now, things are working. So I have no issues with this item, and I encourage it. And I'll be glad to get one-on-one with you and tell you what is in the trenches and what we're hopeful of in the next four or five months.
If we could get a report from him as well, just to, just so that everyone can, you know, read over that and see the things he's working on and the possibilities of funding coming in. All right. I don't have any questions as well either. So first, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven-zero. Exceptions? Okay. Okay, Mr. opposed to K. Or Tisdale opposed to K. Anyone else have exceptions? All right. We'll now move to our code enforcement hearings. Mr. Kruehl?
Good, good. Join in just a minute. Item A on the agenda, David Canachi, 432 Diaz Avenue. I would ask for 30 days on that. We have talked to him, and he's trying to finish.
I'll grant 30 days.
Second.
All right. All right. First, a motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Glavin. All in favor? Seven days for, or seven-zero for a 30-day extension?
Item B, Thou Own Don, 152 Pine Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, Daniel Hanford Estate, 434 Diaz. That case has been resolved. Item D, Mary E. and Charles R. Hill, 422 Diaz. This property is still in violation.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of or in opposition to Mary E. and Charles R. Hill, 422 Diaz Avenue?
Jerry, is that the Weldon shop on the, in the back of, that's a bucket of water, right?
This is just an open piece of property, Mr. Lawrence. This is not where the shed is.
All right. All right. If not, this case is closed. We'll move to item E.
Item E, Evan Lou, 141 Travia Avenue. This is the property that the gentleman was speaking about earlier in the meeting, and it's still in violation.
All right. Anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition of Evan Lou, 141 Travia Avenue? All right. If not, this case is closed. Move to item F.
Item F, Donald James Socure Irrevocable Trust, 240 Benaki Avenue. That case has been resolved.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move to our routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Second. Okay, we have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Walk. Good afternoon, counsel. We still do not have any funds from MEMA and the Mississippi PA website as of this meeting. We did have a long conference call Thursday that I've informed the administration about, where we've had some issues with the Horn Group directing MEMA to hold off advanced funding. We think we've cleared that up with them, and we should have that $912,000 working through the system here within the next few days, and then they're going to do an interim advanced funding for a little over $1 million right after that. So 30 to 45 days, we should have two advances and reimbursements from MEMA.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. If not, I'll call for the question. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, I'll move that we close this meeting in memorance of former Ward Three and Ward Four, Councilman Diane Herensky.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Guines, a second by everyone. All in favor? Seven-zero.
Need to go back to the routine and vote on the routine.
Okay. All right. We did not. Sorry about that. All right. We're going to, at 7:01, we're closing, but I didn't vote on the routine. Okay. We had a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor of the routine agenda? Seven-zero. My fault.
I think you have to reopen the meeting. Adjourn the meeting.
I withdraw my motion to close the meeting.
Do I have a motion to reopen the meeting?
Yes. And I'll second it.
Okay. Move by Mr. Demming, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? All right. Seven-zero. We had a first and a second on the table on the routine. All in favor? Seven-zero. And then we had a motion to close by Mr. Guines, a second in memory of Diane Herensky, second by Mr. ...
The whole group.
Second by everyone. All in favor? Seven-zero. We're adjourned.